Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
It is a few minutes late. It is 6:52. We are meeting virtually in many locations, but for the purposes of the meeting, we are at the WNESU administration building. Though most of us are in remote locations, and I'm calling this meeting to order. What's the first item on the agenda?
Introductions.
Introductions. All right. Remote from 783 Route 121 in Grafton. This is Jack Frye, who is the chair of this particular enterprise. Next to my left is...
Hi, Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster School Board.
And are you live?
No, I should get on.
Yes. About to get on will be Lynn Morgan, who's on my right. And that's, and we've got Charlie Hutchinson. You want to say hi?
Hi, I'm Charlie Hutchinson, Westminster Board.
Krista Gay?
Krista Gay, Athens.
All right, Hardy Merrill? Hardy, you there? You're muted if you are. We'll give Hardy a minute to get to pull up.
I forgot to unmute myself. I just returned from Jack's house to my own house.
The most informal meeting ever. I think I see David Major.
Hi, I'm from here, from Patch Farm Road in Westminster.
Indeed. All right. We may have to mute you.
Jack, I'm here as well.
Who's just spoke?
That's Teen Bealcy from the Westminster Board, reporting from North Carolina.
Well, then you're winning the prize for tonight.
I don't think she can use that. I think you're going to need to use this one.
Yeah. Well, we unplugged, want you to unplug your connection, but still stay live for the documents, because we'll leave them in a minute. All right, introductions. Adjustments to the agenda.
This would be on the Union Elementary School Board. As a friendly observer, it seems to me that the first item ought to be to approve the audit report received.
Is that on our, yes, if that's not on our agenda, it should have been. Unbelievable. Yes, let's approve the audit as presented.
First you want to, that's your adjustment to the agenda.
Yes, and so put that on. And that, that almost ought to be item one, since we need that for the other stuff.
That's correct.
All right. Any other adjustments anyone sees? All right, so let's start, let's start actually with that. Andy, do you have, can you, for the record, state out the surplus as we understood it from RHR Smith?
Yep, just give me one second here, Jack, I have to pull it up.
First, let's take action. I mean, you should take action to simply accept the audit report from the name of his firm.
Yeah, that's, that, let's, we will do that in a second.
You know, we're being recorded tonight. This is just, there's no Fact TV.
Yeah, Fact TV is here.
Fact TV's here.
Oh, yeah, they are.
You put me on the spot, Jack, and so I'm going to have to dig for it, so I'm sorry.
All right, well, I think Cheryl's point to accept the report of RHR Smith, the audit report, is an appropriate one to bring up, because we need to do that. And that'll also give Andy a minute to vamp and find that total. And I also think Hardy has it, if it comes down to that. And I probably have it on a different computer.
And Jack, if I, if I could, after the Union Elementary Board takes that vote, if it is approved by the Union Board, I'd like you to entertain a motion from the Westminster Board to ratify your action, just because Westminster ought to be involved in that.
I like that. All right. I just, I will just simply ask if everyone has, has the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District Audit. It does say, I do want to note for the record, that it says June 30th, 2021. It should say for the year ending June 2021. And we would suggest that they make that amendment, because we are only receiving it in April of 2022. Not to be persnickety, but yeah. So is there anyone that has questions about the content of that audit report? Or wishes to make a comment about it? And Andy, I would encourage you, or Hardy, or any of the other finance people in our group to do that, because I'm not going to monopolize my list of particulars, because it's long and wouldn't be productive.
Well, this is an unsolicited comment from Westminster, but we did have a good and thorough report from RHR Smith a week or so ago. So I think we really did have a lot of discussion at that time.
Yeah, we'll give them credit for that. I'm still...
I think we've had, I think we've had quite a bit of discussion, you know, in several meetings, and I think at this point, it's appropriate to approve this audit report.
I'll take that as a motion to do so, and a second by David Major. Any further discussion?
Only that I've, I've read it, or summarized it, read it quickly, I should say. And it seems thorough, and I thank the auditors for putting all the work into it that they had to do.
Yeah, I, most of my comments about how long it took, and, you know, why there were problems, but I'm just not going to go there. All right, let's do a, a roll call of the unified district, and then I think we'll take Cheryl's note about having the Westminster Board at least go on record as approving it as well, makes sense to me. So Hardy, I'll start with you.
Jack, before, Jack, I know I'm out of order, but I just picked, you just called it the Unified District. In the report, they call it the Union.
That's fine, we'll call the West, we'll call it W N U E S D. And that'll make everybody equally unhappy. All right, so Hardy, what say you?
Yes, I accept the audit.
Krista, how about you?
Yes.
All right, David Major.
Hi.
I will note that Cheryl, that Elise is not here. Lynn?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. I think that's unanimous with the one absent, with the one person absent. I think it's now time to a quick recess to let the Westminster folks do their thing.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Westminster Board to order as well. We may have done that informally before, but we'll do it officially. And I'd like to entertain a motion that we ratified the vote just taken by the Windham Northeast Union Elementary School District to accept the audit. Thank you, Charlie. And a second's not needed. Let me do a quick roll call. Charlie?
Yes.
Teen?
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, yes. And I think, do we have anyone else? No Jeff, no Karen, because it's traveling. Okay, thank you.
All right. Very good. So next, next on the agenda, help me out.
Is allocation for year 21 fund balance.
Okay. Andy, that number at this point?
Yeah, so you have a, you have a total fund balance of $1,376,567.
Andy, I think that's the one that includes the federal money, which we have to take out.
But of that, $35,328 is restricted.
So what's the bottom line then? There we go.
But Hardy's got his hand up, so maybe I'm wrong.
All right, Hardy?
I think, I think that's the old, before the revised audit that we received. The number is on page nine of the new audit, 1412876.
That's correct.
That's, yeah, I knew it was 1.4, 1412876.
Page nine of the new, of the official audit.
Thank you, Hardy, I apologize. I did have the draft up, so I didn't really, yeah.
That's, that's why we have Hardy. Hey Hardy, tell, walk us through your formula, and what the bottom line would be if we split that 1412876 according to it.
Okay, well, basically, I'll start off, I made a, have a three-page document, which I gave to Jack, Andy, and to Cheryl, and I don't know whether it's been shared with anybody else or not. But, so basically, I'm going to read my document first, and then go from there. From the 2019 RHR audit, there was a surplus for Athens-Grafton joint contract of $56,000. Westminster had a surplus of $342,000. These numbers or surpluses were to be included in the W N U E S D balance sheet of July 1st, 2020, when we started this process. The budgets approved by the taxpayers in 2020 and 21 were higher than what was needed to operate the schools and resulted in a surplus. The budgets also inflated the education spending for equalized pupil, which then inflated the homestead tax rates for each town in that district. Result, each town's taxpayers paid more than needed to fund the W N U E S D in 2020 and 21. It is also highly likely that since the 222 budget was built on the 2021 budget, that another surplus will result, which cannot be adequately identified until RSR completes their 2022 audit of the W N U E S D. Now, we know that that's number for the two years is 1,412,241.
Yeah, that also includes the, the rollover of those, of that 56 and 342, because by law, they had to be homologated into the, into the unified budget, just because that's the way it was done by court order. So I just...
So what I, what I did next was I identified what money had been paid by Grafton's, Athens, and Westminster to create these budgets, which were funded. The first one in 2020 was $6,775,605, of which Westminster put in $4,723,800. Athens, $1,033,957, and Grafton, $1,041,410. And two, and the reason we're doing 20 and 21 is because there has not been an audit done for two years. So, and that's because of the problems that have happened at the, the finance office. So they're catching up for a two-year...
We do have an audit report for that, Hardy. We actually do have an audit report. They audited, one of my qualms about all this is they audited what should have been an inauditable report. That's one of the reasons why, you know, Bob and I are having the issues we're having.
Okay, so the 6775605 number ties out to the audit that was presented just today as a 220,000, 220 number on page eight, which is the amount that the three towns gave as revenue. And in 2021, that number is 6,712,332. And that was split $4,879 by Westminster, 878,807, and 957,850. So what I'm saying is that we go to the next page, and we can see, if you can flip to the next one, Jack.
Yeah, that's me, hang on.
Andy's got it?
Got to go through them quickly here.
I don't think I got this, somebody can't get in those.
Is this the one you wanted?
Yep, right there. Okay, so you can see at the top, that's the total surplus that was identified in this audit, $1,412,876. My assumptions are that Athens-Grafton had $56,492 of that that rolled in in 2020, and Westminster, 342,970, for a total of 399,462. That leaves a surplus that occurred in 2020 and 21 of $1,13,414. That's related to the two budgets that you see below for 20 of 6,775,605, and 6,716,552. So my interpretation or thought is that the number should be split based on what came in via Grafton and Athens and Westminster. So Grafton and Athens put in 28.99% of the total budget, and Westminster, 71.01. And I'm estimating that if you take those percentages, you would give the surplus to Grafton and Athens, 293,838, to Westminster, 719,576. You add in the carryover, which was already there, and we would split it 350,330, and
Can you just run those, I just stepped away and stepped back in, sorry, Hardy. So the, so the numbers that we need for, for the article in the warning would be a grant of how many dollars to Westminster School Board?
106,2546.
106...
If everybody's in agreement with this, this is, this is my theory, you know, my way of splitting the money, which I think is a logical method, and I don't know that anybody else has another one, so.
Well, it, this basically follows what I had suggested, you know, that the money should go back to the towns that gave the money in the percentages that they gave it, and this follows that. So I'm, you know, I think, I think it's certainly an arguable proposition. So I'm, I'm looking at a very tiny screen, my apologies. 106,2546, that would be the grant to, grant to Westminster, if we accepted this. And then the, the remainder would be 350...
330.
330. And we can provision that for, for, well, people can decide if they want to provision it for tuition, or provision it for physical plant improvements, but we can have that conversation in a minute. I just want to get, I want to get the first part of this down, and everybody who may have an opinion on that number, tell us if they are comfortable or uncomfortable with
I can, I, I think, this is David speaking, and Hardy, it seems like excellent work, and, and a good way to parse out the sort of logical thinking of the money should go to the entities that put the money in. And, so, yeah, thank you for, for the work doing that. I also think, Jack, that we are not entertaining in this, in this motion, we're simply trying to decide how to divvy up the surplus. We're not attempting to address what to do with the surplus. I think is a, that I think is a decision, decision for another day.
Well, here's, here's the issue with that, David. We, for the purposes of Westminster going independent, this $1,062,546 will show up as a revenue line as of July 1. You don't have to do anything with it, or decide how to allocate it, or anything else. It'll be a revenue line. It'll, it may or may not show up as a surplus for you for next year, depending on what you do with your expenses. But that'll be an item that you bring before the Town District in March next year. For the, for the W N U E S D, we need to, because we did not have a number, we need to have a number and state what the allocation of that is, because that's our surplus for this year. It's not our revenue for next year, the way it is for Westminster. So as, so we do, right now, as part of the, as part of the Order of the State Board of Ed, we have to have, for now, for this, you know, particular moment, we have to have an agreement by the two boards that this is the split. So we would need to do that. And then when the, when the W N U E S D talks about their warning, we will need to have in that warning the language saying what we're doing with our 350,330. So that's how that works. Is that clear as it's going, as it's going to be to everybody?
Yes. So, so right now, let's just vote on this motion to approve this, and then go on to the warning.
All right, I will take that as, in effect, you're moving to do that.
Correct.
Because it's small board, and we roll that way.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the agreement that the, that the surplus represented in RHR Smith will be split as $1,062,546, which will be given to the Westminster School District on its presumption of authority in July 1? And that the $353,330 will be the portion for the W N U E S D?
350,330.
Yeah, but thank you. So that is what we are voting on, and I'm going to start with you, Hardy.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Who am I missing? Oh, David?
Yes.
Now, Elise is absent, so we have unanimous with one person absent on this. And now we're going to kick over to Westminster, and I assume that they will do something similar.
Well, I'd like to entertain a motion that the Westminster School Board ratify the motion just approved by the W N U E S D in the amounts stated.
Who moved?
Charlie has moved, no second needed. Charlie, your vote?
Yes.
And Teen, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, so we have accomplished the, the last remaining step to make the Westminster School District legal. So good. Progress is being made. What else we got?
All right, the next one, so that, what we just did was the allocation.
The allocation, right.
So the next one is approve the warning for the W N U E S D Town Meeting.
Now, I'm, that's the one that we circulated a few days ago. This is, this is strictly, actually, all members of the, of our board vote on this. There are a couple things that have been suggested for removal. Let me get...
It's on touchscreen, you have to use them.
Oh, golly.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Jack, as a small point of order...
You asked that point of order.
Thank you. I'm, I'm thinking that the rest of the meeting may not require the Westminster School Board.
You mean, they don't want to just hang around and be bored tonight?
I would just say that they could be invited to stay if they choose, but I think you're going to go into the warning, the Union District Meeting, and potentially the Articles of Agreement.
Yeah, let me just see if there is anything else on this that we need to do. Through the audit, oh, here's the...
You have, you have the lease, is the...
Oh, yeah, we, we are going to need to do the lease. Actually, let's...
You don't need, do you need us for the...
No, we don't need you for any of that. So maybe director's comments for the Westminster Board, and they can boogie on out. That's probably a mercy. So why don't you do that, just Cheryl?
Thank you, thank you. Teen, I know you're on holiday with family. Would you like to make any director's comments, and then just say, see you later?
No, I think I'll say, see you later. I hope you guys are enjoying the cold we're down here at the beach.
We, we're, we're resentful, if that helps.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you for making the effort to join. Charlie, any comments from you?
Yeah, just thank you, Hardy, for, I think, eminently saying and sensible formula, and I'm glad we've got it passed.
Thank you.
All right, so you guys want to adjourn, or you can, you can hang out. It's up to y'all.
I wish you all goodbye.
Cheryl has an excuse, you can't get out of my driveway until somebody moves, but the rest of you get no such excuse, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. All right. Let us go on to two items. And actually, you know, before we do the lease, we have to talk about, before we do the warning, we have to talk about an item that will be on the warning, which is this lease. And the lease was circulated and, last night, prior, following the meeting of the Select Board in, in Grafton. Hardy, you want to just quickly walk us through the, what happened, since you were there longer than I was?
Basically, the Select Board read the lease that had been prepared by the lawyers, and they all agreed unanimously that, to approve it. And they gave the approval to the chairman of the Select Board to sign the lease, and he did that. And Kim Record has notarized it, and now it's back in our court.
Can I ask a question about the lease?
Yeah.
What was the consideration that the town gave?
The, the original consideration was like a dollar a year.
One dollar, I believe, originally.
Right, but would, I was just wondering with this, this new lease, if there, because that's just something that I noticed was missing, was it just, I'm sure it was fine if the lawyers looked over it, but I just noticed that like the, what exactly the consideration that was given was missing, so I was just curious.
It, it didn't escape my notice either, Krista, but you know, getting these guys to, to do this, there was, there was a lot of pushback initially about this, and I, I think I decided to take yes for an answer.
Yeah.
Rather than, you know, push it off any further. And what this does, in effect, is it meets the requirement the state put on of a substantial interest in the, in the building, and 55 years apparently is what is the Vermont version of that, as opposed to the 99 thing that you see, or Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So.
All right, if, if they were fine with it, that's just something that I wanted to point out, where even if it's not a problem right now, I, I would just be nervous that that would somehow come back up later as things seem to do, so.
Well, you know, at some point, my impression was that they were not willing to hear an offer to purchase, at least at this point. Perhaps after consideration and the passage of time, that might change. We'll, if we have more problems with federal or state money, we might revisit that. And I do have in the, the warning to make an offer to purchase, which we may or may not want to do, depending on how much we think it's going to just tick off people.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
On that question of the, the monies, would that be covered under the part that says all of the lease terms shall remain in full force?
Yeah, that's basic, that's, that just basically says this is an amendment to that lease. And it would have been, you know, I would have liked to have had the original attached to that. But, and we will try to do that for the meeting when we have the district meeting.
I would like to see the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's more than fair and appropriate. And, and I will, I will let the town court know that we want that as part of our meeting.
Yeah.
So.
No, I, I was talking about the first one because it says that for good and valuable consideration, but it didn't list it. But I'm sure nobody's going to come and try to make the argument that this lease is, is void in a few years. So I, I think we're fine.
Yeah, but, but your, your point is, is well taken. And one that got drilled on actually by me when this was originally done.
Should have been a lawyer, Jack.
Uh, I actually did really, really, really well in my LSATs. I just didn't have any money to go to school. I'd be embarrassed to tell you how good they were. Anyway. So I practice as an amateur when, when nobody's looking, that's what happens.
But that's just something that I just wanted to tell the board or anybody, anybody listening, like the odds that somebody's going to come in a few years and try to say that the lease is invalid is, is probably slim to none. But if I was looking at it, that is just something that I think would be really easy to poke a hole in if somebody had an issue in a few years.
I couldn't agree more. So thank you for that. And even, even with that noted, here we are. Okay, so we need to have an approval by this board of that lease modification. And then because this represents a long-term obligation, we, we have to, as opposed to a revenue line, the district will have to vote, just like they would on a bond. So that's why you see it also on your, on your warning. So I'm entertaining a motion to approve.
So. You want that up on the screen at all?
Um, yeah, why not?
It's while you guys are all voting, so someone can read it. This is right.
That's right. The, the lease amendment, which will be to, to, the, the term of the lease shall be for 55 years commencing. Why do they say 2019?
Well, they're backing it up, that's the original date.
Yeah, but that's not.
So it's 55 years, the original date.
I wish they hadn't done that. Because we may have to come back to them.
Is that valid?
Well, see, there you go.
I don't, so if I'm, if, if the issue is, is that under Vermont, it has to be 55 years, I would think that it would be 55 years from the, the lease renewal, which this isn't, because then this, this wouldn't be 55 years long. And I don't know if you can backdate a transaction. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not licensed in Vermont, so I don't know.
Well, I don't like that, I'll be honest with you. And I didn't see this last night because they didn't offer me a copy.
I, I don't know if this is valid.
Well, I think what we're, yeah, hold on just a second. Let me just take a peek at this again. It does state that the agreement is entered to on the 18th of April. And unbelievable.
So, so what they're saying is that the amendment is that, under paragraph one of the original, it says term, and they're going to delete.
Yeah.
And they're going to insert that definition, which is 55 years from April 8, 2019.
Yeah, but that's, but yeah, being 2022, it's 53 years.
Well, it's 55 from the original.
55, if you read the second paragraph, that sort of defines the
I, I know. But the backdating really is an issue. I'm, you know, if we run into a problem with the state, we'll come back to the Select Board and do it again. But let's, let's take yes for an answer.
I don't think you'll run into a problem with the state. I think what the state just wants to do is C Y A, that you have a long-term agreement with the dispersment of federal funds, just because of the way the federal procurement is.
Yeah, I, I'm, you know, I'm not going to let this get in the way. Let's, let's just move to, I, I would advocate, we just agree to this and we'll figure it out if there's another day where there's a problem. So again, we're, we are now, I'm, I'm losing my train of thought. Hardy, did I solicit your vote on this yet?
No, but I vote yes.
Okay. And I think you're also moving, for the record, moving to approve it.
I move that we accept the amendment to the lease presented by the Select Board and signed by them.
Well, see, okay, so Hardy is approved. Krista?
Um, yes, but I just, I just wanted to note my concerns.
A concern noted. David Major?
You're on mute, David. David, you are on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. And I, Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. This is terrible, you're right here and I'm, I'm out of my line of sight. And I'll vote yes for the record on this. So we got that done. All right. So that item is done. We are on to the, on to the warning. And we need to make the following notes on that. We should, we should, a good protocol says we should approve each article in their turn. And, and so I'll have a motion to approve each article as we go through them. That's how I understand we're supposed to do this and we rarely do it. So we're going to fix it and do it the right way. The first one is to elect a moderator to serve for a one-year term, because this is going to be a live meeting. Is there a motion to approve Article 1?
I move we approve Article 1.
Uh, is there any discussion? You mean, this is a remote meeting, we have to do a roll call? Hardy?
Yes.
Krista? Let's say you.
Yes.
Dave, Dave, sorry, David, let's say you.
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
All right, Article 1 approved. Article 2, to elect a treasurer to serve a one-year term until the next annual meeting of the district. Just for the record, we have pointed at interim of Rod Lawrence. It's the reason why we're still able to write checks. And this will make us legal. And I thank Kim Record for pointing out that we didn't have this. So I need a motion to approve.
I read the article.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Hearing none. Hardy Merrill, let's say you.
Yes.
Krista, what say you?
Yes.
David, what say you?
Yes.
Lynn, what say you?
Yes.
Thank you, that's done. Article 3, to elect a clerk to serve a one-year term or until the next annual meeting. And again, at interim right now is, i- is Kim Record. For the record, I need a motion.
I move that we accept to Article 3.
I'm so moved. Any discussion? Hardy Merrill, what say you?
Yes.
Krista, what say you?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
She said, Lynn has agreed to her own motion and I'll agree as well. Okay, Article 4, a little bit more complicated. There was some kickback around whether every single article to amend the, the interim Articles of Agreement, which we've never approved, would need its own article. And rather than do all that, Article 4 is an attempt to simply remove references to the town of Westminster in compliance with the State Board of Ed's rule. And if there is a need to, to do more than that, we will have a note from Sean about it and we can deal with it at the meeting. But this covers the gist of it and that's the reason it's written the way it is. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for some non-legal but thoughtful advice from Krista Gay. Do you think that that's going to be sufficient for us?
Can you reword the question? Is what going to be sufficient?
The Article 4. There's lots of places in article, in, in the original Articles of Agreement talking about how the town of Westminster is a member, Town District's a member. And references regarding town of West, or the Westminster's voting rights. And rather than, since it's, it's literally in every article in some place, and there's like 20 articles in the interim Articles of Agreement, this is just a way of shortening that instead of having essentially a six-page essay for people to fill out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be fine because they've already been separate, like the, the two school boards have already been separated. So you're just doing a, a quick line edit.
Okay. I will take that as, as my working advice until Sean tells me it's wrong for some reason.
That was not legal advice.
I know, I know, but, but it, it's thoughtful advice. How's that?
My personal opinion.
It's your personal opinion. And if Sean comes and says, I need to do this other thing, we'll deal with it on the floor. We, we've at least notified people over in Kent. And you can always substitute this kind of, you can always do a wholesale substitution of the article if the voters decide they need it. Or if the lawyer tells us that the voters decide that they have to eat it. So with that, is there any other, a hand up that I can't see? I'll entertain a motion to approve Article 4.
That's David, I'm happy to move this Article 4 as.
Thank you. So again, Lynn, what say you?
Yes.
Hardy, what say you?
Yes.
Krista, what say you?
Yes.
And David, did I get your, I did get your. He moved it, but he says about it.
Jack, Elise has also joined us.
Uh, Elise, we are, thank you for jumping in here. We are in the middle of approving the Articles of Agreement, or approving the warning.
Yeah, I've lost it.
Elise showed up?
Yep, here I am.
Hi, Elise.
I love you, I'm sorry.
We are, we are appreciative of your being here.
Thank you for helping us get online.
Yeah, it, it, it's been a bit of a circus tonight. We're, we are at Article 4, which is to modify the interim Articles of Agreement to remove references to the town of Westminster in compliance with the State Board of Ed's rule. And this is an attempt to have us avoid having to take the entire Articles of Agreement and approve each of the amendments. And we haven't heard from Sean if this is to his comfort level. But we at least have an article so that if we have to modify it on the floor, we can do that. And that's.
I vote aye.
And I am most appreciative of that. So we have unanimity on Article 4. Article 5 does need to be changed. Article 5 has, shall the voters approve the disposition of the current fund balance, which was, the number's not correct. It's actually now 1,412,876. And according to the formula recommended by the W N U E S D and Westminster Boards, and this is where we need to, the formula is a grant of 1,62,546 to the district of, the School District of Westminster. And 350.
Can you report, repeat it? The formula is a grant of?
to the School District of Westminster. dollars to the, and now we have to decide what that surplus is going to be dedicated to. It can be dedicated to a thing such as future tuition. It can be dedicated to physical plant improvements. And those tend to be the places where that such money gets parked. And I would recommend it be parked, it's a lot of money for a, for a small district our size. We don't have 20 students that are going to middle school.
Is that the correct amount? I just want to make sure.
350, 330, yeah.
Yes.
To the, W N E, yeah.
To the W N U E S D.
To be retained by the W N E N U E S D, to be retained. For the purposes of, let's put down tuition reimbursement and physical improvements to the Grafton Elementary School.
Physical, say it again, physical?
Improvements. Trying to get that boiler fixed one way or the other, by God. All right, I don't think we need, we don't need the semicolon, yeah, we do. Okay, there we go. So that's, or by another formula, because the voters can, in this, in, in the assembly, always change those numbers. They have done so more than once in district meetings. Hopefully they won't, but Hardy, you think I should take that up?
Well, my question is, if we're going to get money from ESRC to work on the physical improvements to our school, shouldn't we have some of this money dedicated to future, future reductions in the tax rate?
We can do that. We can do that for the year 2024.
That's what I'm thinking, into the future.
Why don't we add that? Why don't we add that? Right under, after tuition reimbursement? You want? Future reductions to the tax rate beginning 2024?
And physical improvements.
Because we may need that if the tax rate is ugly when our, our population drops. So that's a good, good add, thank you. All right, so as amended, Hardy, I'm entertaining a motion to approve this Article Five.
I move that we approve these amended motion, Article Five.
Any discussion? I've got none in this room. How about anybody out there? You have to speak up.
I don't see anyone yet.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Just a friendly observer, but the part that says, or by another formula approved by the voters assembled, that is talking about the allocation to Westminster and Athens Grafton, is that the?
You know what? Let's just take that along.
Yeah.
Let's just scrape that whole thing.
Yeah.
And just, yeah. There, let's, yeah.
Period.
Period. So the period's on the other side of the, the. The grammar Nazis have jumped in here and I'm one of them. So, so per ends, period.
I'll just, I'll just note, I don't know if it has to be in the article, but note that the formula is based on monies that the different towns put into the union district.
I think that's one of the ones we'll get into when we actually discuss this because people will want to know how we did this. And that is going to be ours to explain and probably to defend to some extent.
Right, and I just want to make sure it's in the minutes of this meeting that that is, that we are doing it with that.
With that in mind and the formula developed by, by party, I think is perfectly fair. All right, so we are, we are voting on this still, right? Were we missing, did we miss anybody?
Oh, you need a, you need a vote, you have a motion.
Okay, thank you. We're rattled tonight. So we'll begin with the folks in this room, what say you?
Yes.
Lynn says, yes, I say yes. Hardy, what say you?
Yes.
Krista, what say you?
Yes.
Elise, what say you?
Yes.
And David, what say you?
Yes.
Awesomeness, so we have got Article Five done. Now, this one, Six. We're at Article Six and this is the business of, I'm very uncomfortable with having a board of four. And so this is an attempt to bring it back up to six by having additional school members. Rather than getting into trying to break Athens versus Grafton and have to discuss whether or not we need three versus two or five versus three, I decided to leave the language that we have been using for the three-town district, which is that people would vote at large with reserved seats. You know, I'm kind of going out on a limb on this one. It's just that I really do think we should have more than four people on a board. And I really, you know, if people really feel strongly that we should have two school, you know, two voting districts, this is the time to talk about that. But I just think it's easier if we just continue with the formula we've got. It is very much similar to the formula we had when it was a joint district, when it was always assumed that both Athens and Grafton would have to vote for anything to be approved by the Athens Grafton Joint District. So.
Union District now.
Yeah, I know, but in some ways this will feel a little bit like the same, the old days.
Jack, this is Andy. I just want to make sure, if this were to go forward, does this provide enough fluctuation in, so you don't have all your board members turning over on the same year?
The way that it works for, oh, am I on, the way that it works for like new select board members is that the newest member, it has to be for a one-year term.
Right, and then he's got, then after that, he has, they would be elected for two-year intervals after that. So you'd get someone voted for one year and then they'd come on. The next people would be potentially two more years. But I don't know, the current members, are they staggered enough that you're going to get, you're not going to have this?
You know, that's a good question. Would you, people think they'd be more comfortable with one-year intervals? We can do that, I just, you know, I didn't want to have a big, long schedule and I was trying to make it short. We can do one-year intervals and then change it in a future year.
I just, without, without like us being able to pull like, and I know Nicole's on, but she doesn't have access to her stuff, like where everyone's terms are so that you have enough stagger? Because I wouldn't, I would not want to see you guys just get into a situation where your entire board flipped one year or one person was left.
So what would you, what's your, what's your thought on this, Andy? What would you like, what would you recommend?
My thought is, is to have the members serve for at least one year and then allow us time, you know, just to kind of look at it and make sure we've got everyone staggered and maybe we could offer some language at the meeting to say that one, one. I don't.
Yeah, see, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Why don't we, we can leave it the way it is and then modify it at the meeting, but I, I just think that I don't want to modify people's current terms.
No, I don't, yeah, that's not what I'm trying, yeah.
Jack, Jack, I'm going to suggest you just drop the last clause and say, these members shall serve from July 1, 2022 until the next annual meeting, period. And then.
We can clean that up then.
And then we can decide that the next annual, you can, Athens and Grafton can decide at the next annual meeting how the election should go at that point.
I'm not opposed to that.
I think that's what I was trying to say, David, you worded it much better than I did. That's, but that was my thought, is that that would give you a year to kind of figure it out.
I like it.
Well.
Yeah. Who am I hearing from?
Oh no, I was just, I was just reading through the statute about this. I'm sure you consulted it, but there's, there's a specific statute about the length of that.
Right.
The members must be, so I was just reviewing that.
What's your thought?
Um. Do we have to set how long their terms is, are now? Can we just do it for a one-year term?
I think that's what, that's what.
Yeah, that's what you were saying.
Right, and then we can clean it up when we meet again because we're going to have to rejigger all these to have, you know, we've got to rebuild the whole schedule. I just didn't want to have a two-hour meeting about that.
Under the statute, if you elect to, when you're electing the new people, it seems that one of them has to be for one year and one of them has to be for two years.
Right, and I didn't know who should be which. So that was the reason why I did this. What's your, what's your recommendation?
I would just leave off the last clause and just have them be for one-year terms.
All right, so just, so just for a one-year term? Or do you want to get rid of the language that says next annual meeting?
Well, that's a given. I don't think you need that language to be there because it has to be elected at the, their term will end at the next annual meeting.
All right, so for, so shall serve one year from July 1, 2022. The thing was that July 1 is not the, is not the, is not March.
Yeah.
And I didn't want to have people stagger, that's why I used the next annual meeting. And they use that language elsewhere in the Vermont statutes.
Yeah, because it says that the terms shall end on the, on the annual meeting days.
Right, so do you want it to, do you want it to say the members shall serve one term?
That sounds good.
Yes.
Sort of one year, because it's not a year, it's a term.
Yeah.
Beginning July 1st?
Yeah. And it should say one term, not term.
Yes, because that's what it says. If the additional directors are elected at a special meeting, the term of those elected for one year shall expire on the next annual meeting day. So you couldn't even put them in for a full year.
Right, so that's what, I knew I got that next annual meeting from somewhere.
Yeah.
You need that language, Krista?
I'm sorry?
We need this language until the next annual meeting?
I would leave it, I mean, it's a given, but that I think just makes it more clear for the voters.
All right. Thank you, this is why I needed you all to help me with this. All right, Article Six, any further comment questions?
I would maybe adjust the, elected by the district as a whole with the provision that one member shall reside in the town of Athens, I would maybe put that one new member shall reside in the town of Athens and the other new member shall reside in the town of Grafton.
Okay, so new afterward, one.
Yeah.
On the other new member.
And remove, I would remove that semicolon. And that the other new member shall reside in the town of Grafton.
So before shall.
The other new member, yeah.
There, I like it. Thank you. All right, so we will come back to this roll call.
Sorry, one last thing, I would, I would remove the comma after Athens so it doesn't create a separate clause.
Yep.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, so Article Six, as amended, I still have a, I have still a yes from Lynn, yes from me, Hardy?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
All right, now, Article Seven is I wanted you to be able to elect from the floor those members since nobody's going to be running for things they don't know are there. So how do we need to modify this language, Krista?
I don't know if Athens voters can elect from the floor.
Yeah, but we're, but the district can elect from the floor, we're not the town of Athens anymore. This is a district meeting and the presumption is that we can elect from the floor. And the law says that these are our live in-person meetings unless we do them, unless we vote to do them by Australian ballot. So I think we're okay.
I think it looks great.
I love it when something looks great. All right.
Do you want entails?
I'll get it, we're almost done.
Yeah. We're almost done there, sorry. All right, so Article Seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so move.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second. And Lynn's next to me, so she gets to be the mover and I think that was David seconding.
Yep.
All right, what say you, Lynn?
Yes.
What say you, David?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
All right, good, we're splendid with that one. I think that we will take out the language about by and just to, on Article Eight, so to authorize them to sign a long-term lease of no less than 55 years for the, for this property, for the town of Grafton. So let's take out the by the building part because I, as much as I want to do it, I don't want to tick off people. So let's, on Article Eight, can we remove the languages by the building? To, to, to sign a long-term lease, to, to sign a long-term lease of 55 years for the building and grounds of the Athens Elementary School.
Authorize the board of directors.
To, to sign a long-term lease designed for the Grafton Elementary School building and lands for no less. There you are.
I would just add the word accompanying before lands.
Okay. Yeah.
Did I spell that right?
I'm not a. You did.
If there's no red line, you should be good.
No, but under pressure, you never know, right?
I'm impressed, that was great.
You can take out, after 55 years, you could just take out for this property, I think.
Okay. So, so let's move on this one. What say you, Lynn?
Yes.
I'll say yes. Hardy?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
All right. Article Nine, I think we don't need it anymore, we've taken care of that elsewhere.
Did I need to vote on that article?
Did I not, have you voted on that article?
No.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, my apologies. Article Nine is now redundant because we made a lot of changes up above, so I don't think we need that. What do you think? That was my, that was language when I wasn't sure how we were, I was originally going to separate it out. The.
Oh, this is how you want to spend your money?
Yeah, we did that, we did that up earlier, so we can take all that out.
Yeah.
So kill Article Nine. And I'm going to suggest we kill Article Ten as well. I thought that the Athens-Grafton Union School District would be easy. And let me tell you, did I ever get pushback on that for various people in Grafton? And I thought the last thing I want to do is have an argument about which school district, which town's name comes first. So, and Hardy, you had suggested that this was, this is a controversy we could miss.
Yeah, I think the lease is with the W N U E S D and I think we should just leave it like that.
So, yeah, so let's just kill Nine. And, and the article, the shall the voters act to consider other matters is a boilerplate so that if somebody wants to bring up something, they can. So I need a motion to approve Article Nine and then to approve the, the warning as written and authorize the chair to sign it. So let's go Article Nine first.
I move that we accept Article Nine.
Hardy?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Did I miss anyone? Did I miss you again? Oh my God, it's just terrible. All right.
Hey, Jack?
Yes.
Jack, it's Nicole. Can I just confirm who made the motion to accept Article Eight? I don't think we got that. I have everybody's vote, but I don't know who made the motion.
I think it was David.
Yeah.
I think it was David.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and on Article Nine, Lynn has moved to approve that and I'm going to ask Lynn her vote.
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes, Hardy?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I miss anyone? Great, now we need a motion to approve the warning as written and to authorize the chair to sign.
You don't have a date on here, Jack.
Oh, right, thank you. I, I, this is just not going well tonight, my apologies. We talked about, Andy and I talked about a couple of dates on this. Question is, we're assuming that we need to be at least 30 days out, less than 40. And my view is that it's more of a mercy to do this on the weekend, that Saturday, 30 days plus the Saturday. 30 days plus the Saturday, what was the date we came up with, Andy on that?
That would be the 21st, that's 32 days.
All right, so the 21st of May at 7:00 PM? What, we're just putting this in for, as a placeholder, is there any, oh, is there any?
Why, why are we doing it Saturday? Is it a Saturday?
That's a Saturday, yes, and we should say Saturday.
Tim recommended the 24th.
24th is a Tuesday, what's your thought about it? I just hate to have meetings on, on a weekday, but we can.
It's in the evening.
Yeah, we can do, we can do the 24th, I don't care. Would you rather do that?
All I know is that's what Kim recommended to me today.
Well, then let's make Kim happy, because she is after all the Clark. So All right, so, so that's what we've got, you want to make a motion to warn this as corrected? Hardy?
I, I move that we accept this mo, motion as corrected.
Okay, so this warning as corrected. And how do you vote on this, Hardy?
Yes.
How about you, Lynn?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, Krista?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
All right, and this would authorize the chair to sign this, as well as the approval, just retroactively. We've got Tuesday, May 24th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. So I can actually get this out to, in the opinion and the Westminster News and the Grafton News, so that's all good. Well, I think that's, that concludes the business of the evening, except for editor, for, and editorial comments, except for directors' comments. So, do directors have any comments? We'll start with Lynn.
Just thankful for all the great feedback that's been coming in, it's been good to see and that everybody was patient with the slow start.
Well, there is that. How about you, Elise?
I, I have nothing, thank you for all your hard work on this, Jack.
Well, well, thank you all.
And others.
Yes, David?
Yeah, thank you Hardy, and thank you Jack, and good night all.
Krista?
Thanks to Andy for going all the way back to the superintendent's office so that we could be on here, so thanks for that, and thanks and thanks to Hardy and Jack for putting those documents together, I'm sure that took a lot of time, so thank you so much.
Hardy, you're next.
Basically, thanks for Andy, for getting to letting us pull this off tonight.
Yes, and, and my thank you to all of you for your patience, and what was not, not the best organized meeting we've ever had, and, and again, thank you in particular to Hardy for, for pulling a lot of numbers together and doing a lot of the grunt work here, and to Krista for fixing my, for my, fixing my amateur language in several places, so it was all greatly appreciated, this is a good example of why boards are collaborative, and, and multiple heads do a better job than one, thank you all. So I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, everybody, wave, turn off your computers, or walk out of the buildings that you're in, thanks all.